And I call a meeting to order. There is no stand for the second reading.
President-elect, ladies and gentlemen, and I am Mr. America, and civil republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On line one. Please remain standing. Please join me in a moment of silence to mourn the loss of Madigan family members who perished in a recent private disaster. The Madigan will wait to start this meeting. We're calling upon the bond heads, beginning with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda, item number twenty-one, please to form a uniforms. We put a bid out for the uniforms. We had two responses where requested or we recommend to reject the low bid, that did not meet the specifications of the bid, and to award the bid to J and A Uniform Supplies. You know, I got a thing, I know there's on the agenda, but I'd just like to say with the nice weather, there's more bicyclists, motorcycles, pedestrians walking on the streets, and I'm asking all motorists to take due care and be cognizant of these people on the road and be safe. Go ahead.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing. I'm just amazed at the reports I get. Every day, people are leaving their car doors open, and people are raffling through cars and taking stuff out of them. Please lock your cars. Am I correct, Chris?
Yes, sir. We actually found one of the other day open ourselves. That was actually accidental, left to open, but there are all people even open. It's a Nassau County phenomenon, although it's actually a regional, but every department's doing the same thing, please lock the doors.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Chief Moody is unable to be with us this evening, so I call upon Second Assistant Chief Matthew Perner.
Testing, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have nothing on the formal agenda tonight, but I will be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. Those treasure, I will move.
Good evening, Mayor Trustee. Tonight on the agenda, item number one is the reappointment of Thomas Donato as the village assessor, as well as retaining the firm he works for, Michael Haberman and Associates. That's in the information section of the agenda at the end. They provide professional assessment services for the village, as well as administering small claims proceedings for the village, working closely with village council. In addition, Mr. Donato is currently assisting the finance department in the implementation of the new tax billing assessment software. I do want to note that the Haberman and Associates agreement that's on the agenda states that their monthly rate is increasing year over year. However, subsequent to the agenda being published, they have submitted a revised proposal whereby they're keeping their rates flat for the prior two years, so they will not be increasing their rates. Okay, so, yes, sure.
Trustee Bushchester, I just have a, it's not on.
Got to press a poll.
I think it's on, yeah, I know, I think I'm going to do that. Trustee Bushchester, I think there's a chance we can have Thomas Donato come down and make a presentation to us. I did get to talk to him, and he's, he was very helpful. A lot of the residents that are near the Third Track, and the Third Track poles are very concerned about, you know, loss of value in their homes. So he said he would do a study sometime in the fall. He said couldn't do it now, there weren't enough sales. So if he could come down sometime, that would be great.
That's, that's fine. I will speak with him about that, and we will schedule that for one of the board meetings in the fall.
Thank you.
He's very attentive to all the residents' questions. He's at Village Hall one day a week for a couple of hours, but he does email and return phone calls throughout the week, so he's very available to residents.
Yes, I find him very accommodating. Thank you.
Okay, the next items are professional services to reengage these ongoing firms. They are law firms, as well as some professional financial services firms. All the law firms listed here have kept their rates flat from the prior year. Item number D, I do want to make a correction. We are listing for Psy Kajit. The main council's hourly rate is currently eight fifty-eight an hour, not seven eighty, but he is keeping his current rate the same for the next fiscal year. Item D, I'm sorry, item E, financial audit services. This is for PKF O'Connor Davies. They are the village's independent audit firm. Back in 2019, I conducted a formal RFP process, and this is the firm that was selected. At the time, I requested that all the respondents to the RFP provide a three-year billing schedule so that, you know, they wouldn't, you know, increase their rates exorbitantly year over year, you know, for the first couple of years. And so they provided their rates. The proposal was a three-year proposal, which the village engaged them for. Again, they are at wealth, so we put this on the agenda every single year. But these are the rates that were on the proposal. The rate for twenty-one, twenty-two is year three of the three-year proposal. And they are, they are only increasing their rate for the year-end audit by thirteen hundred dollars, so less than two percent. And they kept their deferred comp audit and federal assistance single audit rates flat for all three years. Item number three are transfer funds. I just want to know, item C was a change. If you look at the backup, the original requested transfer was for eight thousand five hundred dollars. But based on my conversations with the mayor, he made some changes to some of the recruiting sites that will be used, and as a result, the amount went from eight thousand five hundred dollars to eight thousand one hundred dollars. So there was a reduction of four hundred dollars there. So the actual transfer that's on the agenda is for only eight thousand one hundred dollars. Item number four are the annual adoption of the board policies. And these are all financial policies from the finance department. The policies being adopted tonight are, have no modifications from the prior year. However, I have been in discussions with the finance commissioner, Trustee Deegan, and we have discussed perhaps adjusting some of the procurement policies for the village this upcoming year. So that will be, and that can be re-adopted throughout the year. So even though you adopt it today, we can still provide them at a future board meeting and re-adopt it with changes. Item number five are the financial institutions, banking institutions that are currently used by the village. So again, if it comes to the board, it'll be an annual basis for the adoption of those institutions. And those all are the items on the agenda. Are there any other questions?
Mayor, I don't know if this is time to question it now or not, but since it involves Irene, and this has nothing to do with Irene's ability or hard work or, I don't know what else, what are the phrases to give you? But I'm just questioning the appointment of Mrs. Wu to the Finance Audit Committee. I have served on that committee once or twice in my coming to board meetings over the last ten years. My understanding of the Finance Audit Committee was to kind of help out and look over the shoulder of the finance department. So I, again, this has nothing to do with Mrs. Wu's abilities or how trustworthy she is or how hard she works. And I'm not questioning her character. I'm just questioning the position being as part of the Audit and Finance Committee. And I just, I'd like an explanation on this, if I can, just why.
Well, I'll explain it.
Sure.
Because I recommended Irene to that position.
Okay.
I recommended her because I felt that she could provide valuable information to that committee. And again, there are certain situations where she might have to excuse herself, right, because of what being taking place. But I've discussed this with both the attorney and with Irene herself. And I think it's a very good position for her to be in. Peter, please, I'm worried.
I just, I just want to also echo Trustee Delaney's concern. I, I think Irene, this is no reflection on her ability. I think she's a superior treasurer, and she does work with the Audit and Finance Committee. There are times when she's there, there are times when she's not, and that's at the discretion of the Audit and Finance Committee. And I think we need to have separation from somebody who's the treasurer versus the oversight. So I, I do agree with Trustee Delaney. I don't know if we want to table this till we get more information about it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but having these, having that person participate on this committee does concern me. The audit, the auditors come to the committee, they report to the trustees, not the staff first. So this clouds the lines of basically separation here of church and state.
I agree, it's an obvious conflict. It shouldn't be like that. There's, there's no business, there's no other municipality. If you find one other village with this setup, I'll vote, I'll vote for it. But I don't think you'd find it. I think the whole idea of having an audit committee is to separate and not have the treasurer there. To believe that at mid-conversation, we're going to go, yeah, and that other thing about, I mean, sorry, could you step outside for a second? I mean, it can't be comfortable, number one. And number two, it can't be very efficient. So I'd be in favor of keeping it separated, if at all possible.
So I have a comment dealing with auditors. Our finance people always sit in with the auditors. So I think that if she sits in and provides valuable information and recuses herself from those areas where it requires oversight over her department and her work, that's, that's easy to do.
But sitting in and being a member are two different things.
Yeah, sitting in.
She's always sat in.
Of course, she needs to work with them, but they're part of it.
I, I wonder, Roseland School District, okay? That's the biggest example I can give you.
What happened there?
What happened there?
Yeah.
Many people went to jail because there was not separation or clear separation between the board and who was on what committee and how the expenses and procurements were being done. They, even the auditors, because they were influenced by the existing treasurer and the existing director of finance or superintendent or assistant superintendent of finance, they have a movie about it. This is a legendary example of conflict between not separating and, and having oversight over public money versus having people there. Of course, you want your treasurer and CFO involved in interactions with the committee, but become a member of the committee, that, that's a very different lane of responsibility.
Peter, can you provide some insight on this, since we've had discussions about this?
I can, Mayor, only to this extent, which is that the Audit Committee has not got any power. It does not, it is not authorized to direct things. It is a vehicle of communication between outside auditors and the board of trustees, and also is often tasked with monitoring the activities of the internal financial officers. So there's no legal conflict of interest, though generally speaking, it is not prudent to have a party who is monitoring an individual also have that individual as a part of itself. Of course, as you pointed out, it is possible for that individual to step out, to recuse, and to step aside when that activity is, is taking place. So my answer to you is that it is not a legal conflict of interest. What I would just throw out the caution that I think you would endorse, which is that to the extent that the Audit Committee is tasked with providing, monitoring or oversight of the financial department, there are aspects of those monitoring that she should not be a part of, and I think she would probably readily agree. For example, to the extent that the committee chooses to take votes before giving its advice to this board of trustees, she may choose to recuse herself from a vote that has to do with her own, her own performance, her own accuracy in providing reports to this board, to the extent that the committee is even tasked with that responsibility.
Do we want to tackle this, Mayor, then? No, I'd like to take a vote on it, to tell you the truth. Okay. So again, Terry, do you have any comments?
It's Terry Deegan. It's Terry Deegan. My comments, I would echo, is how close I have been working with Mrs. Wu, and how tremendous she is. She's been an unbelievable resource to me as I've gotten into this position the last two months. I think as we have discussed this, as far as, you know, conflict of interest and things like that, I don't, we see that being her case.
So I share the same opinion, and again, that's why I recommend it. I lead to part of this committee, and she could recuse herself in certain circumstances, but she's a valuable asset to the village. She gives you a tremendous amount of information and advice. And I think, you know, my position is that I do want to recommend her for this, for this role. So I would, I would vote on this right now. I would, I would try to make, make the following point, and ask for approval, that village treasurer, Irene Wu, is appointed to the Finance Audit Committee for term ending April fourth, 2022. Do I have a motion? Terry?
Second.
Second. Ball of favor, Mr. Ryan? Please, your hands.
I'd rather table it, Mayor, than discuss it.
Great. I'd like an opinion from our voters.
I'd like to table it, Madigan, if we could.
Have you already voted on?
Oh, so we voted, okay, all right.
Well, it's only three positive.
Three to five, right?
Yeah.
Three, three yeses and five nos.
I'd like to think more about it and get to it more.
Given they were already polled for help. How do you vote, no?
The motion does not pass with three affirmative votes. It certainly can be raised again at any time. And I do think that the board may wish to consider, at such time as it does deliberate on that point, that a crafting of the tasks being assigned to the Audit Committee would help identify what conflict, if any, might arise. And again, should a conflict arise, it is not a legal conflict, and it is one in which Mrs. Wu could choose to recuse herself. But that becomes a policy decision of this board. Thank you.
So will revisit this issue.
I'd rather just, you know, get the information what Peter Beech has pointed out than look into it a little more, and we can come back to it next meeting. Okay, good.
Let's move on. Thank you, Irene, thank you very much. Division Lieutenant, give another.
I just have one comment on the, yeah. On the law firms, since we, the new trustees have not had a chance to evaluate them as we knew them. Is there an opportunity if we find out that they're not performing up to the level that they're performing, or if their rates are too high, we can go back to them and even possibly, you know, put it out for RFP? Before signing up for these long-term agreements?
Yes, absolutely. You know, these professional service providers serve at the pleasure of the board, and at any time, the village can choose to go do an RFP for those services and, you know, engage another firm.
Yeah, and that was one incident, I just wanted to make sure everyone else knew that, yeah.
Okay.
As, as a practical matter, those agreements are more binding on the law firms to hold their rates for the fiscal year. It is not binding on the village to keep them employed for the fiscal year. And you could go out for an RFP at any time.
Yeah, so we could go out for an RFP, and they might give us better rates, let's say, right? But we can renew them under the better rates.
That's certainly entirely possible. Or you could approach any one of them and say, hey, we're, we're interested in having you lower your rates, and if they're not lowered, we're going to look elsewhere. You have that power as well.
Yeah, because some of the rates look high, maybe, than my, my thing. Not all of them, but some of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brian, thank you, Irene. Division Superintendent, give another.
Good evening, Mayor, board trustees. I don't have anything on the formal agenda tonight, but I can answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Next, this Recreation Commissioner Paul Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo what my esteemed colleague just said. Recreation has nothing on the agenda this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Bee, do you have anything?
Once again, Mayor, although I was involved in virtually every item on the agenda, I have no single item that emanates from my office, although I do understand there may be some questions of me at the end of this meeting. Thank you.
Lastly, not least, is Village Administrator Ralph Smolik.
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike my colleagues, I have plenty to say. This seems to be a trivial nightmare, I can't grab it sometimes. On finance, item number three. A, Mrs. Wu explained the details on item C. Items A and B are transfers from one portion of, of one, one area where the money is plentiful and it's moving to another area where funding is short. So A is moving from recycling maintenance equipment to sanitation maintenance equipment, and this is for recycling trucks, then the repairs. And central garage, we have four thousand dollars going from central garage electricity, contingency covering costs for the rest of this year. On the number eight, we have re-engagement professional services for Oklahoma Solutions, around twenty-eight, seven forty dollars. This service is a suite of services that are focused on security, monitoring, and maintaining our information technology infrastructure. This includes, it's now limited to, network monitoring, corrective administration of Microsoft software access and security updates, advanced threat protection against viruses and malicious codes such as ransomware, vulnerability testing. It also includes starquod monitoring, onsite technical services, tools to monitor all switches, firewall, servers, and desktops remotely, business continuity plans, including the back server environment to the cloud each hour of the day. This, this contact also sets an early rate for emergency services, service requests that fall outside of any of these documents services. And that's a rate of one hundred eighty-five dollars an hour within a twenty-hour block, it's the same rate as last year. Items nine, nine and ten on the agenda. These are two agreements that allow the school districts to use our fuel depot and to also obtain salt and sand on an absentee basis. I believe the old agreements were sent out by a village director earlier today. The number eleven is an agreement with H2M for geographic information system services, support services, known as GOS. This is to put the rates on file. Any projects that we do with H2M in this category will be informed causal, and we'll work for this board to okay. So it's just to establish rates. Item number twelve, this is a change order. This is related to the Old Country Road patch outside the water tank area. When we started the project, when we, when we started in earnest, we couldn't shut off the water because it would shut off the water on the real lane, so we had to have contracts come in and open up the road, replace two valves, and that was done. Nassau County, Open Shore, the Nassau County Road, they requested that this permanent patch be made. We went back to a contractor who did the opening job, and it was an under seven thousand dollar expense. We then went to our own competitively bid contract that is doing the roadwork now in these parts of the village, and he priced at a much lower rate of about forty-eight thousand dollars. And the, back in March, the private award approved that change order. Following that, Nassau County, when the work was ready to commence, Nassau County pointed out that the road was paved using federal funds, and that the asphalt that would normally be used on roads was not of the consistency that the federal government paid for, which raises the price by twenty-five, by twelve thousand six hundred dollars. So basically, the change order tonight is to increase this, is to recognize that we have to add the super paving, which, but the asphalt's fault, to the contract, because it really didn't fit in our own contract. But it's not a twenty-five thousand two hundred dollar change, it's a twelve thousand six hundred dollar change, it's basically double cost. So we take that one element of twelve thousand six hundred, and we're adding another zero and twenty-five, too. So it's a net change of twelve-six. It brings the cost up to sixty thousand dollars, which is still below the ninety-seven thousand dollars that we received from the original firm. Number thirteen, Wells number eight and twelve, of AOP treatment. I want to just, the number A is a reminder that the, that both the interim and permanent AOP's treatment systems fall into the original emergency declaration as amended on December tenth, two thousand twenty. That emergency declaration, Peter B can expand upon if necessary, but basically it allows us to bypass the competitive bidding process. And this is because the state gave us an unattainable timeline to put these systems into place. And if not for the, for the delay caused by the COVID year, we would have had compliance over six, eight months ago. Nonetheless, A is to amend the existing bond resolution for these twelve. I mentioned during the budget process in March, and I mentioned it in subsequent meetings before the board and the public, that the well, the AOP treatments at Wells eight and twelve would, would be above the twenty million dollars originally proposed and be enabled to thirteen point five, fourteen point five million dollars. We've now settled on a price of thirteen point five million dollars. I want to point out that this includes new items that were not previously part of the original design, including items appearance agenda, increased legal costs, increased insurance services. And it also contains contingency of five hundred thousand dollars that are placed in there. So I think the real number is going to be in twelve point eight to twelve point nine range. But nonetheless, we'll only spend what we spend, and that'll be the final bond. Number B is emergency decoration. Award a bid to Philip Ross Industries, all that we call them PRI. This award the bid for the interim AOP emergency container removal at Wells number eight and twelve to Philip Ross Industries in the amount of five million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars asked by our H2M consultants. We couldn't put this on earlier because we hadn't the details to amend the bond. So the amendment of the bond allows all of these to proceed. They're all tied together. If you don't amend the bond, none of this can happen. Engineering services, H2M Architects and Engineers. This two items here. The first bullet is to ratify the original proposal for engineering services for AOP treatment for Wells number eight and twelve in the amount of four hundred six hundred thousand, five hundred dollars. There are some items, and Mr. Bee might right click this, back in December, there were some items that were put on the information-only portion of the agenda that exceeded fifty thousand dollars, which is a limit by which things had to go back onto the, the same calendar. When that was identified, multiple items were placed before the board to vote on and ratify. This one item was not identified at that time. So this is ratification of something that was, needs to come forward with the board. And then the second bullet is due to the redesign and the increased cost of eight and twelve. The amount of work for the engineering services is almost double, and this is to add another four hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars onto that cost, bringing the total cost of engineering services to eight ninety-two, seven hundred. Item number fourteen is engaged in professional services for, where it's owned as an RRA of risk and resilience assessment and review the emergency response plan. This is a byproduct of a law in two thousand eighteen where all water districts, or water companies serving a population of one in three thousand, three hundred people need develop a, an RRA by June thirtieth of the year. So it is due in a little over a month. And then if there are any actions required of the emergency response plan based on the outcome of that RRA, they will make those adjustments as well. We have the September thirtieth to act. And this is a twenty-six hundred dollar ask, and there might be some additional cost, the RFP has to be updated if so, while we're most contacted at the board. Item number fifteen, this resolution is to continue to engage services of ill-controlled core for additional support calls for our supervisor control and data acquisition system, also known as SCADA. The rate remains the same as last year. This is a system that monitors the entire water delivery system, the distribution system, from the tank levels to the above-ground tanks, to the booster pumps coming on. It sends out alarms to our, our employees so they can check, and most of the checks require impressive checking. But we need them to, when the tank comes online, we will be fine-tuning this, and this is an essential service. Number sixteen, this resolution is for the board to improve the rates for laboratory analytical services with pace handle services. This is a New York State certified lab that do all groundwater testing. They perform all of our groundwater testing as required by Nassau County and the New York State Health Partners. They'll be very busy this year with the commencement of the AOP treatment systems. Number 17, village street network given to our condition assessment and behavior management program. I talked about this during the budget hearings. I've talked about it publicly with this Board. Five years ago, we did a similar assessment. At the time, it was a company known as Sidney Bound. They were acquired by the Lero Group. Lero Group is one of the largest engineering firms on the island and possibly probably in the region. We put out an RPA to eight engineering firms. Several responded. This is the second one instead of the one, the one with the lower grade manning. It was a lower price of about $10,000, $11,000. But they don't have experience in that. We felt this is the better choice. We want to bring it into this year in budget at $39,028. The next highest bid was $42,000. Then after that, it took off to $61,000 and up. So we did include parking fields. In the original study, we only did the roads. In this study, we included the lane miles that associate with parking fields. Let's see, number 18, this resolution supports adoption of the water rates that we passed as part of the 2021-22 budget. Does approve that in April. Number 19, this is a request to pay invoices submitted by the Garden City Golf Club for all work associated with the AOP related infrastructure improvements that occurred on golf course in the amount of $91,000, even $75.34. The regional estimate for this work that's based into that amended bond resolution was about $175,000. So we're coming in at $80,000 less, which is good. That's why I said the actual $13.5 will probably come in much lower if these numbers, these extra numbers come in as defined or lower. Number 20 is the vehicle lift replacement mechanic garage bay three. We have two lifts that were built in progress same time, two years ago. The twin lift, which is used every day, developed a leak, was repairable, had been replaced. And so properly, we plan to do this one this year. It's the twins that failed. That's all I have. I'll take any questions.
Ralph? Trustee Delaney. Two questions. One, on 19, I thought you may have misspoken or else I didn't hear it right. It's $91,000, not $90,000.
$91,875.
I should say $90,000. I think it's $900 or something.
Sorry, it's $91,000. Your original was $175,000.
Thanks. Second is, going back to 12, just curious to ask you a question. Are any other valves that are on county roads? I'm thinking about the watering on Clinton, the well on Clinton. Is there anyplace else that we may have a similar problem downstream?
So there's a valve at Clinton and Stewart that affects the water mainly goes toward the bank.
Yeah, that was on a county road.
It's on a county road. But the problem with Maria Lane was different. I believe Maria Lane was built after the water tank was there. So there's no water, except for some water service line there. So if we shut the water off, we would have disconnected all those valves.
I see. You wouldn't anticipate. What I'm concerned about is if we run into another problem on a county road, it would cost us, you know, more money fixing. You think Maria Lane was the one-off situation?
I think Maria Lane was one-off because we had to add a valve from Maria Lane to control it. So it shut the tank and not shut Maria Lane. So we added a valve and replaced the two valves there because the one that was there, because it was not. And the other places, just to get into engineering bit, all the valves in the village should be regularly tested. We have a valve tester, so they're basically loosened. It runs water, sure they're functional. So we replaced valves and find it doesn't work. We usually find out that during an emergency when a main breaks or got them to fire. So there are the valves in our own streets and county streets. But the Maria Lane situation was totally unique to the tower project.
Okay, thank you.
Ralph Floyd.
Trustee Chester. You might have mentioned this and I might have missed it. 13C Engineering Services, H2N Architects and Engineers. So they're doing additional engineering services to wells number eight and 12. Did you explain what that was and why? You know, we've got such a huge jingle, basically, probably.
Well, okay, so there are a lot of numbers in front of you, but I'll do this without trying to quote numbers off the sheet. Basically, this entire AOP process, as I mentioned, was done under emergency declaration because New York State, and I'm not complaining that they're trying to protect the drinking water. I'm just saying they, usually when they do an emergency contaminant, they do a change or create an MCL. They usually give water districts 18 months, two years, sometimes three years to come up with things. There was only one solution that the Health Department approved, making almost an emergency declaration move. It was something to competitively bid, but the timeline was very aggressive. They basically had no time. So we set about designing things, and they designed the most efficient engineering solution based on the well sites. At the golf club, on the, the golf course that we're talking about, 8 and 12 are on the course. And the treatment code proposed, 8 and 12 feed into, it's a clock. 8 would be at 2 o'clock, 12 would be at 10 o'clock, and 12B is at 6 o'clock. And the waters made in 12 are pumped out of the ground. They have sent to 12B where they go through an aeration process to remove all organic compounds. The dead chlorine and chlorine soda are added that is pumped into a tank and then is boosted out of the system for drinking. The most efficient design was to put the building, the AOP treatment, at 8 and 12B. To do that, though, would go beyond our easement. There would be a very poor treatment of the golf club aesthetics because it's a rather large building, as you can see why the one on Clinton. So we started getting, and I picked this up in the third week in November, about two weeks after I quit this job. And I set up a meeting, and we've been talking ever since. It took a lot of time to get the agreement we had. Nonetheless, a secondary design was done. So these engineering services, if you talk to Dave Needles and the bonds and contract, it was part of this process, too. And Trustee Menudo entered in at one as well. He's working basically from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM each night, trying to fit these things on post-steam copy. So we did multiple iterations. I think we did five to six different designs that we brought to the golf course. They all had different pros and cons. So we went from the optimal engineering solution, which is the most offensive from an aesthetic standpoint of the golf club. And then we moved into 12B, where we wanted to extend the building 20 feet into the easement. That was not acceptable. So all of the, all that time, engineering time, the meetings, the redesign, the, you know, testing, all these things. I'm sure they had a lot of internal meetings. So it just ended up, they basically did everything twice. So it's basically, they threw out the old, they came up with a hybrid. That didn't work. Then we ended up with a couple of designs, and finally we settled on one that everybody agreed on. So it's not that they charge us different rates. They just charged us the effort they did. And we knew this is going to be about a good process when we started.
And the process changed, the process changed because we had to do it.
Right, only that, the process we changed.
It's very tricky. This one, you think, is easier? It sounds maybe easier. Anyway, so because, because of basically a state mandate, would you say that it caused them to have to do all this additional?
Well, yes, or, I guess the conversation with the golf club, in my opinion, should have started earlier.
Right.
It was left for last. It's the highest contaminated well from an AOP standpoint. And when, and the village had not engaged them to that point. So H2N sent some people up to the site, site 12, to do some core drilling. And that's what was a catalyst for conversations. I got contacted by the lawyer, Mr. Westerman. I said, let's have a meeting in a few days. We met within a week. We had all players here, the engineer firm, Mr. Needleson, and then we started on path. The problem is that, you know, everyone's trying to be good neighbors. Everybody here, the country clubs are great neighbors to us. We have water on their property. So the thing is that it had to be something that worked for everybody without getting too aggressive, like end-of-doing type of posture. And that's what we did. The thing is that an engineer can build anything to work. The problem is that, and one of the reasons we have $91,574.34 worth of fees going to the golf clubs is because one of our choices was to do directional drill, which might be added up to $800,000 more onto this bill. They said, well, they can trench, open trench, which is the cheapest solution. And so because we opened trenches, they had to replace sod, and we had to watch out for sprinklers. We had their own people that were watching. So all these things documented, every penny is documented. They gave us all the backup material. So the choices we made at the end, I think, and Trustee Menudo can weigh in on this. Now we have an entire plant on our property. And because of that, we had to make other design changes because we have, the existing plant had electrical lines and such in the way, so we had to move them. So it required more construction costs. Foundation downed, delayed into the ground versus excavated versus above ground on it. So the cost escalated. By the end of the day, it'll work, and we'll get the water out there, which is what we're trying to do. We do have the cover the deferral letter, but my personal commitment, and if I can stay with it, is not to put out water from these wells that exceed the limit. So we could have slowed the whole project down and taken eight months to do it. And it's maybe saved a couple of thousand dollars here and there. But that is a good timeline we put out for ourselves.
It sounds like a short-term, this is Delaney. It sounds like a short-term solution, and it could cost money. But I think when it's analyzed by Ralph and the engineering people, in the long term, it was probably the better thing to do. It's now our building. We shouldn't have any more problems with the golf club. We have an easement. So it sounded like an expensive thing on the front end, but I think over the long term, it probably was the best thing to do.
Okay, so $450,000 or whatever is going to pay off in the long run.
Yeah.
Trustee Chester.
There was a lot.
Could be a lot more.
By the way, we also, we have a very good understanding now also of where the original pipes are. There were water and sewer mains in there. So we have, we have a much better, from a GIS standpoint. So all this is being documented. Plus, on top of this, it wasn't just the drawings and say, no, that drawing's not good. The engineer who did the drawings was out there during construction. We also laid fiber optic so that we could, our SCADA system would be more responsive. So we actually hooked up the well sites to our network now, which is a great advantage for us from a speed and reporting time. And we also talked to our water plant operators because they're the ones that have to deal with going, you know, now they have to go to two different physical geographic locations. So we talked about putting gates into the course easily. So there was a lot going on here on this last year.
Trustee Chester, I think you asked, though, did this all start with a statement? And I'm sure the answer to your question is yes, that was the first time.
I was going to say, but the original question was yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ralph, is that it?
You don't want any more than you.
Do we run through that whole water thing?
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, can I just mention? Thank you. Our copies are on your desk. You'll also get one in the mail if you haven't already. By May each year, all water districts in New York State have to deliver an annual water quality report. This year, it's eight pages long because we had to reprint the actual deferral letter sent out back in February, March, February, I think it was. We also put in there the rate increase, so it was affirmatively written in there and not just in the budget and in those votes in there as well. And it also contains the usual standard four pages that tells where the water comes from, our testing criteria, our capital improvements. We have to get that by the end of May. We got it out early this year. It's on the website as well, under the Water and Sew Department. And also, this year, we received the water report because about, on the western edge of town, there's a portion of our residents who get water from the Western, Water Authority of Western Nassau County. So we put their water quality report on our website for those residents to find it easily, even though they should be going to that website. So we put that on there as well in order. And this was approved by the Nassau County Health Department under the criteria of the State Health Department. They did make some back and forth changes for our consulting. It's prepared by H2N for us.
Thank you very much, Ralph. Before we get into citizen comments, I want to make one comment. I'd like to inform the trustees and residents of the village that we're forming a village fire safety committee ahead of our trustee, O'Brien, Chief Moody, and myself. All potential candidates are all in review right now. They should have information to the public very shortly. Let's go to citizens, let's go to citizens comments. Are there any citizens comments on agenda items? Please state your name and just.
It's Ido Marrows. Lou?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. A question pertaining to agenda items, however, as you said, 13, 20, and 18. In that, is there anyone in the village who didn't have the knowledge and experience and ability of these mounting expenses as far as our water goes? And the question, another question, is the state or federal government providing us with any financial assistance, or we just on our own?
So, so it's been mentioned before, when this, when this came around, the state did offer grants to the EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation. We applied for a grant for well 11 or 10, they're together. I'm not sure which one. I think it was 11. And we have another grant for well 12. Unfortunately, we couldn't submit that grant until all this design was ready. Because they, with the grant, you have to supply the design documents, all the published information. So that grant is, will be submitted as soon as we have all paperwork intact. The grant was based on a percentage of the cost. Unfortunately, it's against the 8.8 billion, not the 13.5. They weren't amended for the new price of being against the old price. But still, it's a good chunk of money. We expect those to come in. Mr. Wu might be a conundrum, but he has committed it all, I'm not sure. Not yet. And we're hoping that they open up subsequent grant applications. When COVID hit and states lost so much money, we thought that was, you know, a long-lost dream. But with the American recovery monies that are flowing, the state budgets might get replenished. Maybe we'll get some, a second grant wave.
This is Delaney. Ralph, I thought we had gotten some money for the first, for the first well. I thought we had gotten some money from the state.
The paperwork is submitted, and I haven't had a call with them in about seven weeks now. But we don't think we've seen any yet, right?
All right, I'm understood. I'm understood.
I also heard that there was supposedly $9 million coming. Apparently, that doesn't seem to be on our account. So obviously, everything's in the air. And apparently, with these increases that were getting towards the well, you know, that ended up being another agenda, this agenda item 18, which is an adoption of a decrease of 10% over last year, which was also 10%, but now it's 1% increase on our water bill over the last fifteen years. Question is, are these really increases something that we should try and get used to in the upcoming years, huh?
So again, I'll call on assistance from Mrs. Wu if the winner wants to jump in. But during the budget process, we go through a revenue expense estimation, and we do our best to forecast water revenues for the upcoming year and not knowing if we're going to have a wet season or a dry season or anything in between. I kept consumption flat, so it's not to be optimistic. And based on the numbers, we realized the shortfall had to make up to pay for all the depreciation from the AOP treatments, and it came out to be a 10% increase. In future years, while I'm not committing to it promisingly now, you know, if, if the expenses change and go downward, then that would put less pressure on the revenues, which could, you know, it doesn't have to go in one direction. It is possible, as the finances and water department stabilize and that we have a great season. Because we're not supposed to have, we're not supposed to, like, use it as a revenue stream like we're a private thing. We're supposed to basically try to break even, which is what we're doing here. So if we do have excess revenues one year, it might give us the ability to lower rates, percentage or two. It's just a year-by-year analysis.
My last question has to do with number 17. The need for this higher firm to do its evaluation on the condition of the containment management program. I know, I remember not long ago that the village finished a study done for the best use of our popular facilities while providing us with future recommendations. for the best use of our public line facilities while providing us with future recommendations. Now, as far as the streets go, it seems to be a primary possibility of the appointment of public boards. The streets division was primarily on the ability to maintain the villages seventy-four miles of streets and perform ongoing maintenance between cleaning, construction, and repair of drainage lines and growth. So please explain to me as to why you feel the need for an outside firm to do these studies while budgeting over three billion dollars for the village streets division? Are they not capable of performing such a study?
Okay, I think you asked me why we're going out of the outhouse, not doing in-house versus.
We have people to hear to know that they're saying these recommendations. If you're designing a street all the time, why can't they come up with this study? I mean, obviously, they said they were asking six days, or they fixed that. But it wasn't really where they're at at the beginning.
So okay, Mr. Ors, let me, so first of all, we have, we have one engineer who does our growth program. I asked him that very question, how long would it take you to do the study that we're soliciting on? He said it would take me five to six months. That hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, that was consumed about half of his salary. So, and we didn't get anything else done. He had, the idea was to go down, they're not using Google Earth. They are going down, traversing every single road, assessing the pavement conditions. They're putting together a report, they make the recommendations, we'll get the parking fields. Very, very time consuming. The general has no time now. He's out there all day overseeing the work. We do have, we're down two engineers as well. So this work was put out there because the five-year market is here. We also want to, wanted to have a third party look at it because it kind of, it takes all the politics out of it too well. You know, some people want their roads paved because it's, it's not as dark as the one next door that got paved, it has cracks in it. And you can have pressure to do a road that really functions properly as an engineering, from an engineering perspective, but doesn't look aesthetically nice. So by having a report by a third party like this, it quantifies everything. It gives air cover to the engineering staff, the DPW, and to the board of trustees when requests come up that we would really support outside of that. And it also gives us guidance on where the most need is. And it does it in a quick fashion. This, this thing will take four to six, maybe eight weeks to compile. It also has GIS layers that fit right into our AutoCAD system and all. So we have a lot for this dollar. And like I said, we did it through an RFP process. We're trying to use our resources as efficiently as possible. This is a well spent forty thousand dollars. We also put out an RFP, which is not here before the board yet. We put an RFP for engineering services for civil engineers so that we could, A, fill in the gaps from our missing engineers until we have time to hire them. Or B, if we restructure the engineering department, which is a vision I have been sparking about, we could use a combination of outside civil engineers and a couple of inside engineers and strategically move our projects along at a quicker pace, more efficiently.
Is there another question today? Is there anyone coordinating anything between the village and repaving a road and public utilities? Because there are intriguing articles that there are several villagers out on the alley who are trying to get money from that. Because they repaint the road and utilities come in and start digging it up to put a new line in.
So.
Which means that now the road is not the nice surface anymore, but they want to have the buckle.
So we have, we have government liaisons for PSCG, Long Island, and also for National Grid. And as such, when we do a road, if there's work in the area, they tell us about it beforehand. And Nassau County as well, they, they broadcast their capital plans five years looking forward. When we did the water main on Pine Street, we talked to National Grid about replacing a gas main, which might have been two years after we did the main. So we said, can you bring it forward and do it now? So our residents aren't getting inconvenienced twice in a three-year period. Plus, we don't want ripping up our newly paved road. So we do coordinate with them and they usually, if they can, comply. And we've done that with all of our projects. Hilton included, when we paved Hilton, they were doing a major gas main down Hilton. We stopped our paving south of the railroad tracks until they could finish the intersection north. And then we came back and sprayed and finished it. So we're very aware, first of all, when you do projects like that, it's really annoying to have a utility come in and rip it up. It bothers me. And so we try to coordinate unless it's an emergency, in which case no one can help it. So we do our best to coordinate with the county and with PSCG, Long Island, and with National Grid.
And we also do that on Meadow?
Yes, on Meadow as well. And when we do, when we do the water main, we also pave the road fully, not just the trench repay. We do, we do a full repaving, which is a, which adds on to the road paving program, so softly.
Can we recruit some of that money from the utility?
Yes, the utility, tell them the utility doesn't paving work. If the utility rips it up, they pay.
Yeah, when the utility doesn't work, they, they rip it up. If we're, if we're doing a road already, we just get the benefit of the, of the permits. You know, like on Seventh Street, they're repaving, they'll be fixing that patch and repaving it. That's not our expense. So when they do the, when it's not a road, we're touching together, they do the full repaving cost.
Thank you, Mr. Ors. Any other citizens?
Steve Alardi, Meadow Street. Item ten, is there any idea what we save on getting a larger amount of salt? So we can supply the school? I know when we built that building, part of the deal was that we would be able to get cheaper rates because we can buy a larger quantity. Is there any numbers on that?
The, the salt dome that was built about four years ago now, I guess. It wasn't built with any thoughts at all about the, about the school district. It was thought basically, it was built because prior to building it, we could only keep on hand about three days' worth of salt. And when a major storm comes and supplies are hard to get, then we start throwing sand on the road, which not only doesn't do as good a job, it also helps deteriorate the roads. It acts like sandpaper. So we built the dome, which holds about, I think, eight and a half to nine days of salt. And we use salt exclusively, except for certain areas where there are hills like Carter Redwell, we'll put a little sand mixture in. So the school district just benefits by the fact that they have a quantity there. And they don't need any of the water we use. And we give it to them at cost, I believe, and also with the fuel.
Ralph, you made the point, this Delaney, you made the point, the school district uses hardly any salt.
Hardly any at all.
And on number twelve, is that money coming out of the water tower pond?
Yes, it's, it's all part of the water project, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens? Okay. Next rule of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous board of trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one special board meeting regarding the budget?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May sixth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting?
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's now move to the consent calendar. Is there any trustee who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, let's now go to any citizen comments on non-agenda items.
I'll move the consent calendar there.
Hi, John Kemble.
Hold on. We have any ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. This motion passes. Okay, now we can move on to the citizen comments on any agenda items. Please state your name and address.
Hi, John Kemble, Kilburn Road.
Thank you.
I was hoping that we could get an update on the litigation regarding the monster poles and/or if any progress has been made in conversations with 3TC or the MTA.
Hi, John Bruce Chester. I think I'm on. Hi, John. You think I'm good now? Okay, I, I have trouble with this, John, sorry. Anyway, I went to a meeting today. They have a meeting monthly, 3TC in LAR. And it's with village officials, trustees, some mayors, town officials. And they basically go over some items that, you know, they asked me for ahead of time. Two of the hiding, two of the items that I asked them for some input on, frankly, for some help on, is the workers parking all over the place. Parking on the grass, you know, on Garden City property. And all over the streets. Mayor Benzalali, trustee Plannigan, I, about a month ago, we chased about twenty-one LAR vehicles, you know, off the property with the help of village administrator Swazi, who then called the police, who came and they left. I had a similar issue yesterday when I was down there. And they're nice enough, but we've done it a million times. So I brought this up and Travis Brennan, who's the public relations guy for 3TC, and Leslie Mesler, who's with the railroad, you know, said they. But what I did like is Alan, I believe his last name is Mesler, he's the head of 3TC. And he told me, he said, and Commissioner Jackson, this is for you. He said, go ahead and ticket these vehicles because we have tried to tell them to not do that. They're supposed to carpool, there was supposed to be a shuttle bus, I've never seen it, to take the workers to the site. That's what we were promised about a year and a half ago. That's never happened. So he said, go ahead and take the vehicles. And, you know, we'll get a little revenue from that and maybe they'll, maybe they'll learn. The second item is the bright lights on the Maryland Avenue train station, which can be seen almost all the way to Stewart Avenue. I've gotten a lot of complaints from the residents on that. And they said that they were going to look into that. They've had complaints from Coral Place and other towns along the nine-mile stretch. In terms of the litigation, we haven't, you know, haven't had anything. We haven't had a meeting in, in a while. I haven't heard from, you know, our attorney, Joseph Macy. We have held up a permit to the railroad at the Denton Avenue Bridge. The town of North Hempstead is now entered into that. Judy Bosworth sent a letter to the railroad asking that they not change. They want the same basic design, I guess, where, you know, cars can go either way, but you've got to wait until you go through it because, see, apparently, they're worried about some traffic there in Garden City Park. Obviously, our residents on town is probably very worried about it. I have looked at a number of things regarding the third track. I did find it frustrating. I had a conversation with the mayor of Westbury, Peter Cavallaro, and they were able to get close to twelve million dollars for a parking garage through this project. Mineola, I had a one conversation with the village clerk. Similar situation where they've gotten money for parking garages. Like, see, basically with us, we've got the two and a half million and that's it. So I've kind of looked through and everything and it's a little frustrating that we haven't gotten more than that. We do have the third track committee up and running. I'm pretty excited about it. We've got heavy resident involvement. I'm the only trustee on it as opposed to the prior third track committee. And we have six residents in addition to myself spread throughout the village. Well, maybe not around the village, but in the areas that are affected by this wonderful project. So we're going to be meeting soon and we'll go forward. And any updates on litigation, I'll, I'll try to give to you. I hope I answered your questions.
Yeah, and as long as my time is on, I guess, can we make this your, like a standing agenda item every three or four meetings or so now?
Okay, I, I guess.
Does that sound like a reasonable thing?
I didn't hear that.
Standard agenda item.
Could we be an agenda item maybe every, every other meeting?
We'll follow up every.
Yeah, the board seems, the board seems to be in agreement with that, John, so.
Be able to provide an update for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll definitely do that. Okay? Thanks. Any other resident comments on non-agenda items?
Yeah, I have one, Dom McLeod.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ten Westbury, Bruce, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Garden City got two and a half billion dollars for its, but did you say Coral Place got twelve million and Mineola got more, or did I hear that wrong?
No, I did not, Coral Place, the village of Westbury. In my discussion with Mayor Peter Cavallaro, he stated that the parking garage that's being put up on the Westbury train station is valued at about twelve million. Mineola, I don't know if it was all from the LAR project. Some of it might have been from the state, but they had two parking garages worth about thirty-five million. I think the one on, on Second Street by St. James is definitely funded from the railroad. So yeah, they did. And they applied for that a while.
So if it's, if it's half, I'm sorry, if it's half that at seventeen million, is there any reason why we got fourteen percent of what Mineola did and eleven percent of what the other town did? I mean, we, we, we got, we got some rich levels and it sounds like they got eight figures.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that.
Just be, just, isn't it also true that the Westbury and Mineola parking garages are open to the public, not just the residents of, and they're primarily for Long Island Railroad parking? Are they not?
They are primarily, they are, they're open to other residents, but I think it's a percentage. It's not a large percentage, but there is.
They're open, they're open for Long Island Railroad parking, but those stations, aren't they not?
Yes, they are. And it's a percentage of them. So there's still a decent amount of parking for their own, for their own residents, a high percentage.
If I could just, if I could just finish up, Bruce, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is if they can get ten and fifteen millions, why did we not get five million to bury those poles? I just don't understand this. Thank you very much.
That'd be great. Okay, let's move along. Any other residents have comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, Steve Alardi, Meadow Street. Do we have any timing for the start of the water main project on Meadow yet?
Hello, Mr. Alardi. My understanding is that the insurance papers were, once we award the, once the board awards the project, then a lot of paperwork passes between the vendor and the purchasing department, finance department. I believe the vendor dropped off the required insurance documents last Friday. I'm not quite sure how long, how much more before taking orders proceed. I can contact you personally after speaking to engineering, to get some information. Because I know you want to share that with the people in the East. But it won't be that long. I believe the, I know when it's going to end. I believe the project will be done by the end of December. But I want to check on that because I have so many projects going through my head that I don't know when this will. So I think, I think it's the end, I think December, December twentieth was the final date from the contract, from my last recollection. But I'll double check on that. It should start soon. It's going to be about six months worth of work.
Does that anticipated end date include the paving that's going along with this project? Or is that going to fall into the spring?
Ralph, Delaney, paving, I think Steve, has to depend upon when it's finished as to whether, as to when the asphalt plants close down. My recollection is that the asphalt plants close down either a week or ten days before Christmas. Around the fifteenth. Light is shaking, it's set full. And just have been, they might work on that?
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth is the, is the shutdown date of the asphalt plants. So if they can get the project done by then, the paving would be done then. Yeah, it's a. And we will, I, I think Ralph and DPW will push these people as hard as we can so that the project will be done and can be paid before Christmas.
Yes, well, we're, we're quite well aware of the holiday schedules and we don't want to wait till the spring. So I, I will try to quantify all that through, Steve, and I'll, I'll let the board know as well. It's a little early to, I just know that. It was a six, it's a six-month timeline. Of course, there's weather permitting in there as well. And, you know, we ran into.
And, you know, we ran into problems too because like on the last project we did on, on Pine Street, you know, we get markouts, 811 gets called, before you excavate anywhere, you have to do markouts. And so like you call National Grid and they'll mark out the current gas line, but they don't keep records of or mark out previously abandoned gas lines. So when contracts are digging, they run into a gas line that could be potentially an injury so they know about. So things like that delay, make them move cautiously, but I think, I think hopefully the complete job is done this year.
Understood. And the last thing, I see that there's information for the DPW superintendent, that that last person, that last I heard, somebody was being offered, I think it's that fall through?
The, the board is just continuing the search this time, that's all I can say on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other residents? Any more comments from any other residents, please? So no further citizen comments, I ask for motion to close the meeting.
I would move to close the meeting and so that we can move into executive session for a legal opinion from counsel.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Keep them alive, good evening.